Good morning, everybody. Alrighty, getting started on a, just a little bit later today. Got in late last night and uh, needed a little, little rest for my sudden out of townage. But we are live with the day twenty-two study stream. For today, uh, yeah, yeah, for today, day twenty-two. And this is actually the start of a brand-new week. Week four in the twenty-eight-day study challenge. So what, things are going really well right now. I'm really, uh, really enjoying this. I hope you are all enjoying it as well. Just doing a little bit of, uh, sharing here on Facebook. And the tweets. Okay, so we are shared and good to go. Cool beans. So today, um, we're gonna start off by looking at my current year-to-date stats. And actually, it's not gonna be, uh, year-to-date stats. We're gonna change things up. I have a new format here. We're gonna keep it kiss simple, you know, keep it simple stupid. Um, that whole principle, kiss simple. And we'll be doing leak tracker stats. So I'll show you that in just a little bit. We've completed a, a week of, uh, assigning accurate opponent two bet calling ranges, filtering through hands, a third week of facing flop raises as a C better. This week, we're getting into assessing and preventing tilt. That's what this whole week is about right here. And we'll get into all of that in a little bit along with the future dominos. Let's get to the stats first. See how things are progressing here. So, um, if we go to the, uh, we don't, um, so these are my, we're looking at my current stats right now. And at twenty-five NL six max. We started off by looking at year-to-date numbers. And as the weeks went on, I looked at year-to-date as well. But when you look at year-to-date, when you go from four point five to, uh, six point one K hands, there's not many changes in it. You know, I only added one-third of my original, uh, number of hands played to this. So what I decided to do and said was just look at week to week. So I went back through and, uh, instead of year-to-date, one, two, and three, just looking at it week to week. And I also changed up the stats here. Now, these stats match the leak tracker stats over here. VP PFR, PFR divided by VP, that ratio right there. Uh, it, it just goes down the line here. And the reason I wanted to do that is because I just wanna keep it simple. I wanna look at a smaller number of stats, but all stats that really add to my understanding of how I'm playing right now and kinda give me areas to focus on, areas to look into, to see if I have possible leaks. What I did as well was I took, or I inputted over here the average winning regs numbers, uh, from leak tracker for these various stats. So for example, VP. When you click on this VP right here, it gives you the stat name, uh, a description, the formula. And then when you watch the video on the stat, at one point within the video, um, I believe I have the volume turned down. So we shouldn't be hearing anything. I'll just show you real quick. Yeah, no volume, I don't think. As the video plays, you can see it tells you right here, the average winning players fold big blind to steal stat. Um, well, I guess I clicked on a different one, whatever. It gives you the percentages right there. Well, all of those percentages, low stakes, shorthanded. Because that's what I'm keeping track of, you know, six max play, um, at twenty-five NL, low stakes. Uh, I, I put these numbers over here so that I can quickly see when I look at my stats for the prior week or year-to-date, I can see where I fall in, you know, among the average winning regs. And those poker tracker for, uh, well, those leak tracker videos, they say something very important. Just because your stat falls within this range doesn't make you a winning or, or a winning player, but doesn't make you a losing player either. These stats are just a guide of where average players play. Um, the more looser, more aggressive players, they might play closer when it comes to VP, to the thirty-one percent range. But they might have a lot of, uh, post-flop skills that they employ to make that range profitable. Uh, they might do a lot of things post-flop that I don't do so that they can play more hands. Uh, conversely, there could be players like myself who's at the bottom end of the range. Maybe I do some stuff post-flop that makes this range profitable or maybe not so profitable. Maybe I need to make changes. So by seeing where your stats fall among the average winning regs, it kinda gives you something to look into, something to dive into further. Because I am s- at, at the low end of the spectrum right here. Like really, at the, at the tail end of it. It's something I definitely need to look into and I need to see how I can, uh, uh, play more hands. Profit, or preferably in later position, you know, the cutoff and the button, that kinda thing. Um, maybe call a lot less in the blinds and open it up. Maybe thirty percent in the cutoff and forty-five percent in the button. I mean, who knows what I should be doing, but I should be increasing this and playing quite a bit more. Uh, so that's why I did this, to keep it simple, less stats to look at. And I have a good gauge of where my stat falls among the average winning regs. So let's go ahead and take a look at the past week, uh, four sixteen to four twenty-two. Which I've already pulled up the dates, four sixteen to four twenty-two. So you can see I played one point seven K hands, which really is not much at all. It was a shortened week because I had to go out of town and, uh, just so busy with everything else I'm doing. Um, this week's gonna be busy too because I've got the webinar on Saturday that I still need to plan for. Um, as well as two coaching sessions, uh, as well as just miscellaneous stuff that needs to be taken care of. So, um, we'll get into my goals in a little bit. But my, my goal just overall is to play two thousand hands this week. Uh, in the shortened week as well because, uh, oh, we'll get into that later. Alright, so my currency one is negative nineteen dollars. Uh, in, in today's email, I'll be sending this, uh, this formatted stats tracker to you so that you can follow along and, and, uh, track stats the exact same way I do. Minus four point five. Good, updated a, a little bit this past week. I've been wanting to do that, trying to up it, up things a little bit more. Seventy-four percent, three bet. I haven't formatted this report yet to match this just yet. Um, I will eventually. Three point two, oh man, not many, three bets at all. I was super value-oriented with three bets this past week. Yep, yep, yep. So what are we on? C bet the flop. Right there, sixty-six percent. I'll go through and I'll take a look. I'll compare these numbers to these in a second. Uh, I'd rather just get all the numbers down first than look at that. Uh, flop AF. And we'll do these all kind of injunction, flop AF here. So four point four. You can see I have like flop turn river, flop turn river with the totals right there. So part of me is I just kinda jump through and get all this stuff in. Turn AF three point one. Total AF numbers. Three, seven, fifty. Alright, so. Fold a flop, C bet sixty percent. Fold a flop bet just in general. Fold to flop bet seventy percent, a little high. C betting on the turn. Sixty-two. Folded turn bet. Decreased it, good. Fold a river bet, yeah, I just fold way too much. Seventy-six is still quite a bit high. Need to get that down. Attempt to steal, let's look at some steel percentages now. As you can see, I definitely need to be raising this stuff. Twenty-nine, fold to steal. Now the three bet steal, uh, not at all in the small blind this past week. Well, it is only one thousand hands, but still I should've at least restolen at least one time with like any suited ace, you know, especially versus a cutoff or a button, uh, open. Uh, four point oh right there. One money at showdown. So you can see, uh, I got to showdown quite a bit. One money at showdown, one-one soft flop forty-one. One at showdown after a river call. Alright. Look at some win rates here. So yeah, eventually I'll have this in order to where this sheet is, uh, much quicker and easier to fill out. Uh, negative forty-six, I'm not a fan of that. That means I'm, uh, just barely more profitable than if I had folded every small blind. So there's those numbers there. Now let's take a look at my in-position versus out-of-position play. Play. In position, one hundred and seven hands, negative one ninety-seven. Big blinds per one hundred, that's a bit ugly. But you know, I mean, I'm playing in position. Maybe I just got dealt some bad hands and bad spots and maybe I got it in, uh, through a little tilt. Who knows? So I'll have to take a look at that kinda stuff later on. Right now, we're just recording stats. Uh, you know, the reason you record stats is so you can look for problem areas and then dive in to the various hands and filter for different hands as well. So I'm not gonna start diving in just yet. Recording your stats like this also gives you a good baseline for the future so that you can, uh, you know, see how things change as your studies, as your play progresses, as you become a better player. Oh, one hundred and fifty-three positive out of position, great. Small sample, hundred and six hands. So you know, it's obviously fifty, fifty. Is, uh, what it is here. And like I've said before, I don't, uh, my goal, it's not necessary, but my goal is to play more than half of my hands in position versus my opponents. Um, just because I know that in general, I mean, if you see right here, uh, in position, win rate is three twenty versus one twenty-six, two sixty-five versus nineteen. Now, these two weeks are anomalies because as you can see, the number of hands played was rather a low amount. That was low too, but that fell more in line with what it should be. Um, but these were low-play weeks right here. After two K hands, who knows what can happen? I mean, two thousand hands, there, there's, there's plenty of poker players that hit two thousand hands in one day of play. If they're multi-tableing ten or twelve tables, they can easily hit two thousand hands with, in just a couple hours, you know? Um, Nanonoko would hit millions of hands a year, I think he would. But I mean, he could easily hit when he's, when he was, uh, twenty-four tabling. I think he could hit upwards of like ten to twenty thousand hands a day? Does that sound right? At least ten thousand hands in one day. I just play so few tables and not that often, not as often as I'd like to. Uh, because I've got so much stuff going on, but yeah, I do want to play more. So if we take a look now at our stats as a whole, let's take a look, let's see where we're really lacking. So we're improving here. I'm not gonna make any notes because it's getting up there, but I do want to keep increasing it. PFR divided by VP, that's kind of a function of just how much you play these two. It's not something where I'm gonna try to get that up. But my number is generally pretty high and that's because there's a small gap between VP and PFR. If I'm coming into the pot, most of the time it's coming in for a raise. Not many lumps and not many calls as well, coming in for raises mostly. So this number just kinda, hmm, uh, it falls where it will based on the way I'm playing, uh, in, in all my spots pre-flop. Now my three bet is super low. Gotta increase this for sure. C betting on flop is good, I'm good with that. I would like it a little bit higher, but it's not too bad. Flop AF, flop AFQ. So flop AF aggression factor is your bets and raises divided by your calls pre-flop. Um, your aggression factor, I'm sorry, aggression frequency, that is your bets and raises divided by the total number of bets, calls, raises, and checks pre-flop right there. So it's just, just a sign of aggression right here. And you can see, um, let's see, a few weeks ago, I was super aggressive on the turn. I just, I was betting and raising every turn. Uh, and you could see decent break-even week right there. But when I decreased my aggression, um, you could see this past or in week two, when I decreased my aggression, big time losing, I was calling way too often. Way too often. And this right here, you can see that's a huge drop from right there. It's twenty-five percent decrease in my aggression. So, um, keep up the aggression. Of the aggression here too. Um, yeah, so I just have to aggress or keep getting aggressive. And one way that I can do that is to constantly, like we saw earlier right here, keep trying to play in position and using my position against my opponents. As soon as they check, I'm betting. As soon as they're C betting out of position, if they C bet a lot, I'm raising that kind of thing. I need to be using aggression, not so much passivity, of course. Um, fold turn to dip, I'm, I'm glad my turn, fold turn to bet, I'm sorry, fold to turn a bet decreased. This was a, a focus in, uh, in recent weeks, prior weeks. Um, river AF, AFQ, I'm pretty good with both of those. I mean, that could be a little bit higher. I'm, I tend to call too much, so, uh, don't call as often. Now, these are just general goals right here. When I make a note like this, these are also instances or spots that I can start to dive into and to look for, like, you know, don't call as often. I can look at all my river calls, actually, let's just do that real quick. Just to see what that, uh, what that ends up being. Any call on the river, so it doesn't matter what led up to it, what kinda pot it was, just calming on the river. Let's see what happens. Um, only seven hands where I called, but I lost thirty dollars in the seven hands that I called. So let's take a look at a, a big loser here. Oh, pocket deuces. Okay, flopping the full house, nice bet. And then a small raise, I'm just going for value right here. You know, I'm hoping he has a, a good flush draw that he wants to come in with. I'm hoping he just has eight X, a random eight X hand, for sure. Which hey, that's great, I currently beat him, I'm just going for value out of the guy. If he has an eight X, what, he has one more eight and then three other cards. He has four, four hands or four cards to come that can beat me to get a better full house. Um, as well as the paired board pairing, the board can come four, four. And if he just has an eight, he beats me. So you can consider that a fifth out, he only has five outs, he only has ten percent a chance of catching his card on the next street. So my bet right here is definitely just going for value. And he calls, of course, and the five comes, so I'm thinking, at this point, I'm hoping, oh, great, he's got a flush. I'm gonna make some money right here. Or if he has an eight, he likely doesn't have an eight-five or an eight-deuce. So, um, he did call me pre-flop, so he could have those. And so of course he checks, I bet, and then he just calls. So I'm right now thinking, oh, maybe he has a flush, but he's scared of the paired board, so he's just slow playing it. Uh, or playing passive, like, it's not exactly slow, slow playing. Um, uh, what's, oh, hold, I'll get to that question in a second print. Uh, and then the four comes, I'm not scared of that all, I think I have the best possible hand. But the guy ends up shoving, so he could be shoving just with his flush, hoping he's good. Um, yeah, he is aggressive, but I can't naturally put him on a set of fives that turned a full house, a set of fours that rivered the full house. Um, he has some hands that can beat me, but there's really just not that many. I've got to make this call right here. Um, eleven dollars to win, I mean, I have, my pot odds is twenty-one percent. I, I win this more than twenty-one percent of the time, uh, right here. So I'm thinking, I've got to bet. He could have a random eight, ace eight, king eight, queen eight, something that he called pre-flop that he's doing. And then of course he has the eight-five if I remember right. Yep, he had the eight-five, so he called me pre-flop with the eight-five. Let's see what his small blind calling is. It's only been thirty-three hands, fifty, uh, one out of two, it's not enough to really consider. Um, I was just surprised that he showed up with these kinda stats, looking tight aggressive, showing up with an eight-five. But he took his chances and he hit, just got a miracle on me right there. But it happened, so I lost a pretty good stack, a full stack actually, what a bummer. Um, so Print, you said what is the sample size? The sample size is, uh, one point seven K. So not many hands at all, just one thousand seven hundred. But I still think it's valuable at least to look through to see how my play progress, progressed last week as I was studying this stuff. Uh, or as I was studying and see how my studies affected my play. Yeah, so definitely I have to up the aggression right there. Don't call as often. That hand I think deserved to call on the river with my full house. But, um, but, uh, you know, I just need to not call as often, be better and get aggressive on prior streets to avoid having to call. I should be the better on the river. Oh, actually, that's a good idea. So as a caller, I'm down thirty dollars over seven hands. What if I'm the better on the river? Any bet? Look at that. So when I'm making the bets on the river, eighteen hands, sixty-five dollars up. So my river play right there, um, you know, between the two, between calling and betting, betting is definitely the more profitable play. For one thing, you're getting opponents to fold. Uh, so you have that fold equity. When you're calling, you're just hoping that you're best at that point. Maybe you know you're best and, and so you're calling because, uh, it's calling all-in or something. But for the most part, betting is where the profits are at for sure. Uh, that eighty-five is a cooler, think it was played out very well. Villain will stack off with worse a lot of the time, even if the five doesn't come, he's likely to pay you off. Totes! I agree with you there, bike king, one hundred percent, I agree with you. Yeah, so that hand did play itself out, it's a bummer. But a- as you can see, just in general, eighteen hands, I'm betting sixty-five bucks up. The other one, seven hands, uh, thirty dollars down. Betting is the play on the river. Uh, so, oh, let's take a look here. Attempt to steal, uh, not too bad. I would like to up it a little bit, but not necessary. Fold to steal, I'm good with that amount. SB, now this is where I've got to increase. I have a few opponents who are regs, they seem like very profitable, good players. Their small blind, uh, re-steal is roughly eight percent. Get this up, six percent or more would be good. I wanna get it up, I wanna test it more. I wanna just see, look for good spots, look for good opponents and make this kind of one of my focuses this week. Is three bet re-stealing a bit more out of the blinds. I just don't do it, as you can see by my stats, I'm more value-oriented. Um, let's take a quick look. Uh, opposed to small blind, yep. Oh. Oh, raises steal, actually, this is what I actually want to look at right there. Uh, because if I'm re-stealing more, it should be against a cutoff or a button steal. So we made the re-steal. Oh, that's right, it was zero. Doi. So let's just go like this, uh, this year, let's look at this stat this year. Okay, so twenty-seven hands, what kind of hands am I doing this with? Um, we'll sort it by whole cards. Aces, of course, ace, king, ace, queen, ace, jack, ace, six offsuit, ace, five suited, kings, queens, lots of jacks, tens, nines, nine, eight. So you can see, um, really, I'm sure out of the over ten thousand hands I've played this year, there should have been a lot more opportunities where I could be three bet re-stealing right there. I'm just not taking a, enough chances doing it. I'm just going so mainly for value or against guys who I really think are folding. But I should see so many more ace deuces, ace threes, ace fives. Um, prob- probably every suited ace right there. It's an ace blocker, it's a really good hand to, uh, three bet re-steal versus the cutoff and the button raises. Um, so yeah, this is definitely an area of focus for me. Da-da-da-da. Fifty, I'm good with those as a total aggression factor. I, I do tend to be more aggressive as opposed to being passive. Um, I do more bets and, bets and raises versus calls and checks, definitely. Um, went to showdown, yeah, I mean, my percentages are looking good, just looking at the percentage right here. One-win soft flop is pretty low, I think that means I'm giving up way too much. So, uh, fold to turn bet, still too high. Fold to flop a bit in general, way too high. Right there, I just give up way too much, you know, I, I, uh, because I think it's a, I think it's a function of me being pretty flop honest. I'm aggressive when the situation's right, but in general, I only continue and I bet a lot. Because I'm playing against so many fish, I bet when I have a good hand. So when people bet against me, I think I kinda put my mentality into post-flop game onto a lot of my opponents. So when they're betting, I just fold thinking that they probably have something. But I need to be, uh, continuing more, especially with aggression. Not necessarily, um, continuing more with calling and passivity. I should be more aggressive when it comes to continuing post-flop. Uh, let's see, da-da-da, okay. We'll just leave those as, as I got enough right here, all these different notices is enough for me to focus on in my play sessions this week and stuff to look into and study. Um, the win rates, like I said, seventeen hundred hands. Uh, this, these two are a bummer. Uh, if you fold every small blind, you're at negative fifty big blinds per one hundred hands. This means I'm barely, it's better than losing more money. But it means I'm barely, um, playing better than break-even, not break-even. Uh, the fact that I'm playing some of my small blind hands means I'm making a little bit of money. I'm not losing as much as I could, is a way to look at it. And, um, yeah, the in-position flop play and out-of-position, yeah, it's just a, a function of the small sample right there. Good, so I have some stuff. Uh, like I said, if you are part of the twenty-eight days of poker study email group, I'll be emailing this out later on so that you can use this form for yourself, uh, to record your play. And it'll have all these percentages here so you don't have to go through and look at them for yourself. Wow, look at that, three bet re-steal. Right there, look at that huge gap between four and thirteen, four and fourteen. I've seen a lot of profitable players at roughly the eight percent. Yeah, so I definitely wanna up mine for sure, over six, but up it right there. So that'll be a focus this week. Actually. Let's bold it. Increase it. Big focus this week, right there. I'll be, so you'll be seeing me, uh, in my play sessions this week that I stream on Twitch. I'll be three bet re-stealing a lot more, testing it out, seeing how it works, seeing what hands I can do it against or do it with and what players I can do it against. So the weekly plan for this week is assessing and preventing tilt. And why this theme? Well, if we ask the poker focusing question, what's the one thing I can study right now such that by learning it, everything else would be easier or unnecessary? Well, as online players, there's a lot of things that can set us off on tilt, both on and off the felt. Tilt makes us do dumb things like spew chips and illogical bluffs, call down out of spite, jump up and stakes to get even, seek revenge, as well as many other things. If we can avoid tilt, we be, we'll be in our A-game more often, which should lead to better decisions and more profits. And don't forget, more fun is had when we win more, which promotes more play and even more winnings. Good, good. So being in a good mental frame and avoiding tilt is key to making more money. Um, so we're working on tilt right now so that it's less of a problem as we build our skills and play more poker. If I can play the next fifty thousand hands at twenty-five percent of the tilt that I used to or that I currently experience, I'll make more money than if I didn't improve my mental game and play to those fifty thousand hands at one hundred percent, my normal tilt level. Let's say I go on tilt, um, you know, once every four days and I spew off two stacks when I tilt. Just for example, every four days, two stacks. Well, if I can do that twenty-five percent less, that would be like once every sixteen days and spew off two stacks. That is so much better for my win rate, so much more healthier, um, healthier for my mental state, for my win rate and everything right there, if I can do it. So by studying this, I should experience less tilt. Also, um, the reason I'm doing this, I wanna show you how you can study the mental game. Anything in life can be studied and improved upon. So let's get to it with the mental game. Uh, Print says a que- or has a typed in the chat here. For small blind three bet, I've been trying to look at button opening raise first in, especially against regs. They seem like they will fold so long as your three bet isn't too high. Start putting some junk in there. Yep, you're right about that. For sure. So when he was talking about RFI raise first in, you know, so if we just open up a random table right here, uh, in the small blind. Okay, this guy opened twenty-eight hands, it's not a big sample. But if we look at this, um, this is my positional stat and just this number right here is raised first in. But when I click on it, I can see raised first in by position. So his button raised first in is fifty percent, one out of two. And so like Print said, this is a great stat to first look at when you're considering, can I three bet re-steal here? So you definitely wanna look at. And then fold to three bet is key. On the button, how often does he fold? Oh, one out of one, great, I can three bet re-steal here, uh, maybe a little bit more successfully than somebody who, uh, folds zero percent of the time. Yep, so those are some really good stats. Thank you very much for that, Print, I appreciate it. Uh, some good stats to think about when SB or re-stealing. Okay, so when you are studying the mental game and you're improving your mental game. Well, in all of poker, when it comes to studying and I put it out in my book, I talk about dominos, right? And you work on one thing and then you work on the next and work on the next and, and your skills just build upon each other so you can knock over successively bigger dominos. Well, once we get our mental game kind of in check and we study it and we improve our mental game, some future things that we can study and work on is getting into our A-game mental state. So we wanna play a session, but for whatever reason, we've, we feel like we're, we're, we are in our C game or B game. We're just not in our A-game, we're not feeling it, but we want to play. Well, in the future, we can work on putting ourselves into that A-game mind's mental state and finding ways to get ourselves there if we're not already there. Another thing we can work on is improving mental clarity and focus for longer or more intense poker play. So, uh, some of us, you know, we can be focused and, and play intently with purpose and pay attention to everything at the tables for like thirty minutes. And, but maybe that's our limit. And then after thirty minutes, we start to bog down, our game goes from A games or our mental state goes from A game to B game to C game. Whereas other players out there, they can stay focused and end the game for three, four, five, eight hours, whatever the case is. After we start working on our mental game, this is something that we can, uh, build up to, you know? Uh, just increasing the, our mental clarity and focus for the game. Another thing we can study after this is moving your poker mental game to the rest of your life. So let's say you're now fine with dealing with bad beats and you can take the suckouts fine and you can keep your A-game through whatever happens at the poker tables. But maybe outside of poker, um, you know, you return to your car in the parking lot and you find a scratch on and you flip out and get all angry. Um, or somebody cuts you off in traffic and you flip them off and get all angry. Or, um, I, I don't know, you know, you suddenly get a water bill that's twice as much as normal and you flip out and get angry. Well, if other things outside of poker are tilting you, but poker itself isn't tilting you, then you can take what you've been learning and working on in poker and apply it to the outside world so that your whole mental state is much more clear and better, like that. Um, you can also work on eating habits and sleeping better, just in general, or just general health. Um, you can also work on eating habits and sleeping better, just in general, just general health, health habits beyond this as well. So mental game is a start, but that can lead into so many other areas in your life. Alrighty, so this week's goals, my own poker play and, and everything goals. I'm, I want to hit two thousand hands and that's four sessions at five hundred hands. Looking ahead at this week, I have so much going on with, um, two study sessions tomorrow and Wednesday to make up for not being here yesterday. And to make up for this coming Saturday is my webinar. So I'm not going to try to fit in a study session before the webinar. I'm going to get this whole week of study done by Friday so that I can devote Saturday to just the webinar. Um, so I've got a lot going on, so I, I don't think I'll be able to play uh, a ton, but two thousand hands I should be able to fit for, uh, fit in. I'm also going to be doing a warm-up prior to each session with an emphasis on tilt and anger management. Also think about logic statements pre-session and assessing my mindset at the start of the session as well. Giving myself an A, B, or C wherever my mindset is at. Um, on my cooldown after each session, I'll honestly assess any tilt that occurs or begins to come over me. Um, also assessing what happened to bring about the tilt or, or any tilt. So let's say, uh, you know, some kind of hand happens and oh, it's perfect, I'm going to be working on three bet re-stealing, right? Oftentimes for myself, when a bluff goes wrong and he forebets me, uh, that can start to put me on tilt like when my expectations aren't met. So let's say I have the perfect opponent, he raises first in on the button, uh, uh, forty five percent of the time and he folds to three bets eighty percent of the time. Well, if I three bet, I'm expecting him to fold, but what if he forebets or what if he calls, oh no, my plan didn't work. Now I gotta go to the flop or I have to fold my hand. And that can start to put me, not put me on tilt, but it can start to mess with my mental state, that kind of a thing. So, um, I will honestly assess any tilt that occurs and take notes on it, of course, try to learn from it. Um, for my study stream, I'll be doing two tomorrow, two Wednesday, one Thursday, and then Friday one with my wrap-up as usual. And then Saturday, um, so at that point, I'll be Yep, I'll be officially done with my twenty eight days of uh, po- of poker study journey. So I'll send a big email out after the, after that with all that I learned and everything, um, and then, you know, with the wrap-up session as well. And then I want to stream and play two different sessions this week. Yeah, it's just something I haven't done enough of. I want to do it just because I want to do it, I enjoy doing it, so I'm going to do it twice this week. Uh, let's see, bike, yeah, against people that like to steal too often, I'll incorporate a lot of ace X hands. Broadways, especially hands like ace deuce through ace five, perfect. Three betting pure junk is obviously never great. You want something that hopefully has blockers to what they might be stealing with. As well as something that will play decently post-flop out of position when called. Uh, yep, I totally agree with you, bike king, bike king, hundred percent there. Uh, if you guys don't know bike king streams, I don't know how often it is bike king, three or four times a week, you stream, uh, ACR. Um, I think it's ACR that you normally stream. Yeah, so if you haven't uh, joined or seen bike king's stream, check that out, please, just do a little search on bike king, uh, in the Twitch. So some hypotheses for this week. If I do proper warm-ups before each session, I'll have a better chance of staving off tilt. Now, I know this to be the case, but I'm just going to really pay attention to it and see that that is the case this week. I'm going to take notes on it and everything. That's one of the things that, that I think will come from this week of study. Um, if I clean, this is important for me, if I clean my plate prior to each session, in other words, remove distractions, I'll experience less tilt, more focused play and more fun as well. This is a big thing for me, so every week I put out a podcast, right? And I should be working on it Monday and Tuesday and putting the podcast out Wednesday. But sometimes I don't work on it because I'd rather play poker, I got other stuff going on, so I postpone it. And oftentimes, it's, it's one of these weird things that I experience when I know that I have to do something. And then, um, I play poker instead. And if I end up losing, that could put me on tilt like dang it, I shouldn't have been playing poker. I should have been working on my podcast instead. If I'd have been working on the podcast, I would be closer to finished with that and I wouldn't have lost this money. So that kind of stuff can put me on tilt, just having distractions there. So what I need to do before each play session is remove the distractions, take those off of my plate so that I can just play and focus on play. So if I have a good session or if I have a bad session, I don't blame it, um, on or if I have a bad session, I don't blame it on anything outside of my decisions made, uh, in the session. So that's the one thing, and then uh, another, the last hypothesis, as I record my warm-ups and cooldowns, I think those exercises will have a more calming effect on my mental game in general. And my mind will subconsciously be working on these ideas on and off the felt. And I know that to be the case, but I'm really going to assess it this week, um, because I've found that whatever I'm studying, it's just always in the back of my mind and as I'm walking my dog or I'm cleaning the house, an idea will occur to me that, oh, that's perfect, that's what I should do or that's what I should use or the next my play, I'll do this and and so I think as I think about my warm-ups and cooldowns a little bit more often, uh, it'll always be in the back of my mind. So even when I'm just about to sit down and get ready for a play session, um, all that stuff will be working subconsciously to hopefully help me have a better session and be in my A game. So I was thinking about quantifiables and, you know, last week when we talk about, um, facing raises as the C better, there's a lot of different like actual stats that you can look at to help gauge how your game is progressing. When it comes to your mental state, the only real stat or number that I can think of is just the win rate, you know, there's no like spew stat. I guess I could look at, um, no, you can't, I mean, even just your calling stats because you call based on the situation. Um, my aggression going over the, over the top, I mean, yeah. So this is the only real stat that I could think of, but some other things that I want to keep track of, of course, is that I want to do proper warm-ups before every session and proper cooldowns before ev- or after every session. So I'm just going to simply keep track of, uh, because I want to play four sessions, this week I should have done four warm-ups and four cooldowns as well. And I also want to record my session mental state, um, post. Post-session, so my in, oh, that's what I should call, I apologize. In-game session. In-game, in-session? There we go, in-session is fine. So at the end of the session during the cooldown, I want to record my mental state. Uh, you know, did I play with my A game the whole time or did I drop into the B or C game? And same thing, in-session play rating, would I give myself an A for play or a B or a C or a D or an F for the poker play? Uh, that I actually put into action that, uh, in that session. So next up, oh, and I should have mentioned at the very beginning, um, this is all part of my weekly plan, which I'll send out at the email this week, but I have I have a full plan that I follow, um, where, where I just where I, uh, where I create hypotheses, things I think I'm going to learn, where I record my quantifiables, the different stats that I want to keep track of and my study methods on and off the felt. Um, I've given you guys that before, but you'll see it in today's email as well. So off the felt, I plan on doing more meditation, which I kicked back into the habit of last week and I'll continue it this week. Gratitude, which is something important, I'll talk about that tomorrow in the study. Um, I want to listen to some podcasts, uh, actually like interviews with Jared Tendler and Dr. Patricia Cardner. Um, I'm gonna get back into the mental game of poker right here and peak poker performance, Dr. Patricia Cardner's book a little bit more. I'm not saying I'm going to read them fully, but I might uh, go through them and take a look and actually maybe when it comes to assessing tilt, that kind of stuff. Um, TMGP, the Mental Game of Poker questionnaire. I've done this before a long time ago. Um, at the end of the book, Jared Tendler has a client questionnaire that he has all of his new clients fill out. Um, and three different phases at the beginning, mid, and at the end of their training together. Uh, so actually, we're, we're going to go online right now and find that questionnaire, but we'll, we'll answer the questionnaire in one of these study streams. Off the felt or on the felt, I'm sorry, warm-ups and cooldowns for sure. Elliot Rose MP threes, we'll get into that in a little bit. Focus sessions, volume sessions, logic statements at the ready, always have logic statements to help me deal with, deal with any tilt that occurs. So assessing tilt, let's get that questionnaire there. Um, I don't remember. Uh, ques- oh, questions? This might be it. Oh, yeah, I know he's given these out for free before and that's where I got it. Um, it's within my poker notes somewhere. Come onward. Wait for that puppy to load up. There we go, oh. So you saw what my, uh, what was my search? Oh, Mental Game of Poker questionnaire. I'm not sure if this is, hey, this, oh, perfect, yeah. So this is the client questionnaire, so all you have to do to get this for yourself is uh, Mental Game of Poker questionnaire. And this is something that he gave out, uh, I think it was just part of his website. When he first, when he released the book, he gave these questions out as well. So now that we have these in Word, I'll simply, uh, you know, have the question and I'll start typing in my answer and sharing it with all of you right there. Good, so. Cashed. Uh, this is it right here, how do I do this? Will that work? Copy, might work. Wow, there's all those dots there. Yeah, no worries. I'm just making this note for all of you and I'll share this in the email later. Google search that, okay. Now Elliot Rose MP threes, if you don't know Elliot Rowe, he and Patricia Card, he still has his mental can't remember this, the, the podcast right now. Elliot Rowe. Free MP three. See what this is. Poker Mind Coach, there we go, so. Tilt Buster MP three, he has all these various MP threes here. Download, I think it, I can't remember what I paid for it. Oh, maybe he gives some of this stuff for free, I don't, I don't exactly remember, but if you just go to Elliot Rowe or pokermindcoach.com, just go to the homepage. So you can see, I think under products is where I found them at before. There we go, MTT, okay, perfect. So because I play cash games, I listen to online cash MP three, oh geez, shouldn't do that, um, so actually, I haven't heard this one, this is the one I've heard before. It's a value pack, so I guess it contains a lot more, but I only listened to one currently right now. Um, but it's pretty good stuff, so I'll put this in the notes for today. And I'll share it with you later, but this is where you can go to, uh, uh, to get the MP three yourself and I'll talk about it in, in one of the upcoming study sessions. Um, Jared Tendler is just on the top two podcast, oh, I have not heard it, good, that's what I was going to do. So, haven't heard that one, let's go back to Google. Jared Tendler guest. My next guest is guest Jared Tendler. On Twitter. Mindset Talks, actually, that's a good one, let's see here. Two plus two poker cast. Thank you for that bike king, Jared Tendler, that's oh eight. Two plus two poker cast twenty ten. Says oh eight. I don't want to listen to one from oh eight, oh, that was a long time, episode forty six, holy cow. Uh, let's see here. David Sklansky. Poker Cast Archives, okay, here we go. Do you remember bike king when it was? I'm looking for his name right here. November twenty sixteen, oh, wait a second. Oh, the top two, I appo- oh, thank you very much. Top two. There we go, the top two. There we go. Jared Tendler. I don't see a date, but I'm assuming, and this is their stitch page, stitcher page, great. So I'll send this out in today's notes. Thank you very much for that bike king, I appreciate it. Right there, sweets. And then Dr. Patricia Cardner. It's fine. I've heard her on a few and I don't, don't remember. Sarah talks to Mental Toughness Poker News. Oh, full twenty minutes, what is this one? Hi Roller, I've never heard of Hi Roller Radio, so this is something worth checking out. First time, something new. Great, and so I'll send those links out in today's, uh, today's email. So, uh, upcoming pretty soon in a, in a in a study stream, we'll do the poker questionnaire. I'll also listen to Elliot Rose MP threes and talk about that and you can check those out as well. Uh, listen to this, uh, uh, podcast interview on the top two and then that one that we just saw right there. So we'll listen to those and talk about them, about lessons learned and stuff, and then we'll cover uh, some other stuff up here that we're going to talk about for this week. So it'll be interesting, not a lot of, probably not a lot of database diving and hand reviews and stuff. Um, when it comes to the mental game, more like talking about and thinking about what puts me on tilt, what might put you on tilt, how we can deal with that kind of stuff. So it should be a, a pretty interesting week of study, um, poker related stuff, but not necessarily database or poker tracker four related stuff. Cool beans. Alright, well, thank you very much, everybody. I really appreciate your time today, bike king for everyone, uh, um, uh, participating in the chat. Thank you very much for your time, I appreciate it, and I will catch you all on the flip side.